For July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Just so welcome to attend live here in the call hearing room. They are also welcome to attend virtually through the www dot M A Southborough dot civic plus dot com virtual meeting site. Hey, so the first item we have on the agenda this evening is three thirty-seven Turnpike Road. Laura, do you have the?
Yep. Uh, the Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing at the McCullough Hearing Room Seventeen Common Street, Wednesday, July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four at seven o'clock P M. With regard to the petition of gracious home adult day healthcare center LLC three thirty-seven Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass, map twenty-five lot twelve B. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow two principal uses on one lot and to allow an adult daycare use. The property is located in the industrial park zoning district relief is requested under section one seventy-four dash eight C two. Section one seventy-four dash eight point six C seven and section one seventy-four dash nine.
Right, so for the applicant, if you have anybody who has something to present, you could come to the table and just know who you are and what your roles.
Sorry about that, that was off.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Neil Bingham. I am the attorney for the applicants.
Hey, hello, everyone, and thank you so much for coming. My name is Tony Jung. I'm the manager and owner of a gracious home adult day healthcare center. Thank you.
Then also helping us with our presentation tonight is Matthew Murva from Bowler. He'll have a few words.
Do you have anything to present or are you just gonna speak?
Well, I think that we're gonna, we're just gonna speak, we.
Okay, we, 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 we did, we, I think we've all seen the details, so. Yes, probably not necessary, but why don't we, why don't you go ahead and start?
Yeah, the only thing that we're gonna present probably is the site plan. We'll, we'll put it up and point some things out. Sorry about that.
Okay.
So, uh, we're, we're here today seeking uh, two special permits, one under one seventy-four eight point six C seven to authorize the adult daycare use in the I P district and the second to allow us second principal use uh on that site. So uh, when I think about coming before a board on a special permit, I used to, I used to think that I could impose my will. I, I've since learned that these are discretionary, these are discretionary permits and that they, they are going to be allowed if we do our job, and that is to one establish that we have a right under your bylaw to be here in the first place under these two sections. Uh, and then, and then two, in my own words, and not necessarily the words of the criteria. It is to establish for you that we have a really good project, a project that will provide benefits to the town of Southborough and that when you balance those benefits against any negatives, and actually, we would tell you there are, there are really aren't any negatives here. Uh, that you, that you are now looking at a project that you'd like to see here and that we, we, we get, we get our grant in that, in that manner. I think the best way uh, to, to deal with this is I'm just gonna say a couple of things about, about how we're here. I would then like to turn it over to the, to the applicant, Tony Zhang. And, you know, Tony is just going to, to explain to you a little something about his experience, which I think really matters here. This isn't the first time that he has, uh, he has uh, um, started an adult daycare facility as another one in Burlington and it's, and it's very, very successful. And I, it's kind of nice to know that if you, someone's coming in that they might actually be able to be successful in the, in the, in the project that, that they're doing. And he'll talk about those things and you know, how the adult daycare really does provide, I think exactly what it is that the, uh, what the, the bylaw is looking for, which is, you know, let's promote the health, the safety and, and related things, uh, you know, for the community. And, uh, and minimize the detriment. So, you know, with that said, I am gonna turn it over to Tony. He's briefly gonna describe these things. Uh, when Tony's done, I, I think it makes some sense for, for myself and for Mr. Murva to fill in any blanks and at any time to stop talking and to take your questions if you, if you have them, uh, along the way. Tony?
Hi, hello, everyone. Uh, you know, I have a existing uh facility in Burlington, and that's one has been in business for like three years. Actually, this month's July is going to be the thirty year anniversary. Uh, in the past three years, you know, we provide a service up to about a two hundred members from like, you know, about one hundred families, because sometimes like, you know, the couple, the husband and wife, they both join us. Uh, let me talk about the service, like, you know, we provide in the past three years. So, like, the program uh, operating hours is from like seven A M. to three P M. We provide door-to-door transportation. So we have our own, like, you know, uh, shuttle buses to the, you know, their houses, the front door, to pick them up and bring them back to the center. Uh, in the afternoon, you know, same thing, you know, we have the shuttle bus, send them back to the front door. So we don't just do like, you know, curb drop off, we make sure they get to the front door safely. And also, uh, we provide like two hot meals, breakfast and lunch. And we contact with a, a fully licensed restaurant, so they do catering, you know, they, every day we get a fresh meals, morning and lunch. Uh, besides that, you know, inside the facility, we have like nurses, registered nurses on set every day. We have like, right now, in the other facility, we have like, uh, six registered nurse working for us for each day, two will, twelve of them will be on site. What they do, they will like, uh, you know, supervise the seniors, and also they work closely with the P C P, make sure they can monitor all the changes about the senior. If there is anything, you know, we notice, you know, um, they, you know, something wrong, we knew, we will inform the P C P, you know, the same day, and we will discuss a solution. Whatever we will do, we will follow the P C P's order, and we will perform the treatment. And besides that, the meals, you know, we provide, we have a contracted like, uh, you know, nutrition. The nutrition will review the meals order, uh, the menu every six months or three months, depending on the season. Make sure the nutrition, everything is, you know, good enough for the seniors. And also, um, you know, we have like, you know, onset, you know, aides, certified aides on site, they provide, you know, hands-on services. For example, like, you know, um, Ms. A wants to take a bath, so we can do that. And Mr. B wants to go to restroom, this assistance, so our, like, you know, certified aide will provide that service. Uh, by doing this, you know, we can reduce, you know, the caregiver's stress and burnout. Sometimes, you know, like, you know, um, you know, like one family have like, you know, syndrome at home, but, uh, they, they, they need to work. But because, because of the, uh, the senior, they need a, you know, assistance, sometimes they cannot go to work for that day. So that will, like, you know, actually for the family, that will be like a very stressful job, but we take that over without paying. You know what? Because, you know, all the funding is through the government, through insurance company. So the, for the senior, they don't even need to pay a penny for that. We've contacted with like, you know, a different insurance company, like a half health plan, you know, uh, senior health, like, you know, Navy Care, that comes, uh, insurance company, so we can, we kind of like, you know, the real caregiver, we give the service, real service, the benefit to the senior. And also, um, for everyday operation, you know, the buses, we own the buses, we don't have third party. We own the buses and we have the drivers. So they will be like, you know, well-trained, we will make sure, no matter the pickup or drop-off, will be very safe. And also for the three thirty-seven, the location from the map, you can see, you know, it's right on Route nine, you know, that one give us like, you know, very easy access to the main road. So we can, from there, we can go to, you know, the local town or the surrounding towns without any problem. And also, you know, there around the building, there's a loop line, so we would design like a, a loop. We will like, you know, come from one direction and going to the other direction, make it like a, a one-way. We don't have like a two-way traction. That means, you know, whenever we pick up or drop off, the, that door will be on the curb side. So the senior got off, they'll be very safe. And we have like, you know, uh, employee at the front door to greeting them, make sure they got off, you know, the bus safe and get in the center safely. Uh, if you have any questions, you can, you know, ask me anytime, you know, I'm happy to, uh, you know, answer whatever concern or question we may have. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Tony. So, uh, Matt, I think it would make some sense, I'm gonna trade places. Yeah. Yeah.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, again, my name's Matt Murva with Bowler. Uh, we're the engineers, uh, who've been helping with the application here, uh, and really not a lot for us to do, to be quite honest with you. We're not, we're not changing the site. Uh, it's an existing structure on Route nine. Uh, the building sits uh between two uh parking areas, both accessible for this building. Um, and the build-out will include around fourteen thousand square feet of space that will be dedicated to the gracious home use within the overall uh, two-story footprint and, and structure that already exists there. So there's really no exterior construction happening as part of this project. Uh, all we're really talking about is, is swapping out the signage uh, on the exterior. Everything else will be within the, the four walls of the, the building that you, you see here. Uh, there are accessible parking spaces on site already clearly striped. Uh, so we, we have that requirement met. We'll be dedicating some spaces here to the vans that Mr. Zhang mentioned. Uh, and those still allow us for plenty of parking for the uh, uses that remain in the building besides the, the adult daycare. Uh, we, we need by the calculation that is a little tough to see on this screen, but um, we need by zoning a hundred and six spaces and we provide over a hundred and forty uh, within the property. So we're, we're amply parked here uh, on site to, to accommodate this use. We're not changing the access that will remain right here off Route nine, so no additional curb cuts or additional uh modifications to the site. So just wanted to, you know, just sort of walk through that, that it's sort of a minimal impact. It really is the, the change in use that we're we're here to, to discuss tonight. But if there are any questions on parking site, anything, glad to, glad to answer them.
So, okay, before we, we start with the, the questions from the board members, um, you did, we, there will be a, a site plan review for, of the site before the for planning. So as far as some of the details that relate to the spot, like what, as we just mentioned, parking spots, et cetera, uh, they, they will be covered, but um, why don't we, why don't we start with Paul? Do you have any questions?
Well, I don't really have any questions. I don't, like, I, I agree, I don't see the any adverse impact here. I don't see any, it doesn't appear to be any increase in traffic or safety issues. So I think that, you know, there's no changes to the building or the lot or anything like that, so it doesn't, the use doesn't seem to be too detrimental or anything, so I don't, I don't really, I don't really have any questions or see any, any problem with it. Um, you know, the typical thing, sometimes I ask if there's any like objections from neighbors or something like that, but I don't, I don't even see what would be objectionable here, but I don't know if we.
Right.
You know, that's.
I mean, it is an existing building in use, so it's not like you've added something new.
Right.
Right. Okay.
That's all.
All right, Doug?
Um, so I'd agree with Paul. I mean, um, first of all, I think it's a great use. Um, we have some friends that actually have their, um, you know, parents or parent living with them. Um, so I think it's just another great option for, you know, folks in Southbore, the area, to have another option where their parents can be with them, and they can be somewhere during the day. A lot of parents, you know, you know, dealt, yeah, dealt children, yeah.
No, 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 no.
Um, you know, as we call it, the adult children have, you know, places where they need to put their parents during the day, and they're both working, so I think it's great. I think it's also great that, you know, we obviously know the commercial office market is a bit down. And the ability to have different uses in these buildings and reuse it, I think it's great too as well. Um, so I don't think it's detrimental of anything. I think it's, it's value add to the town, and I think it's, it's good. Um, do have a couple of quick questions. Um, I've heard the word bus and I heard the word van, so there's more out of curiosity. Are these vans, are these buses, or more just, is there any more details? Or are there various sizes? I'm just more curious.
Okay, actually, uh, you know, I said, you know, the shuttle buses, okay, they are like, you know, vans.
Yep.
Yep, so like, you know, uh, like, most of them.
Yeah, yeah, so ADA accessible.
That's right.
Okay. Um, just out of curiosity, when you're fully up and running, how many seniors do you think would be in your facility? More just out of curiosity.
Sure, you know, uh, from our other existing facility for the daily capacity with a service around like one hundred senior every day. I think they'll be around that.
Great.
You know, and also, uh, transportation and traffic is, it's not gonna be a problem, because, you know, uh, ninety, ninety-nine percent of our, like, you know, member seniors, they don't drive. We provide, you know, the, you know, transportation. You know, we encourage them to sit on our shuttle bus, because that will be like super safe. We don't want them to drive to the center. Even they have like, you know, family member, they want to come here, you know, they cannot just come here and knock the door and walk in, you know, we need appointment. They say, you know, uh, uh, this coming Friday, I want to go there, see my father, like, you know, Mr. Space, that's okay, no problem, we didn't know that. And when they come, you know, we have like employees right at the front to welcome them and, uh, get them the way. We don't let them to walk around, because, you know, this is, uh, like, a medical facility, we cannot let strangers work on the, you know, the facility. And, and also, uh, if we have like, you know, um, visitors, same thing, they have to make appointment. Same, we'll tell them, you know, you don't need to drive, you know, we will provide like, you know, bus to your door. Because, you know, we want them to experience the fully, like, you know, service, like, for the regular day. Yeah, and also for overnight parking, that's for sure, you know, the buses will be parked there. I think for this, you know, uh, location, we will have about like ten buses, you know, parking overnight, you know, besides that, only like employees. I don't think there will be any other persons, you know, parked there.
Okay, great, thank you. No other questions.
Okay, Doris?
I'll just try to add unique comments. So, um, I'm in agreement with the other board members that it seems like a unique value-added service that we could add to the town. And it fills the gap where the elderly, we're not sure what your age limit is, can maybe stay in their home or stay with their, their children or, and also be cared for during the day. Um, I just have a few questions. And, um, I know you're gonna have the answer to it. So you talked, uh, use the word medical facility, use the word R N, and I'm gonna give you some reference, I'm pretty close to the problem, I have an elderly parent. Um, and, um, and, and they've been housed, they need to be in long-term housing. This is not an overnight housing, I understand that. So are you actually registered? Um, I know that assisted living is treated one way in the state and nursing homes fall under some guidance by the state as well as, well as the assisted living. Is there a registration, or can you say medical facility? Uh, you're saying you provide P C P services, um, does that, could you kind of explain that aspect to me? I do understand it from an assisted living and a nursing home perspective. And then you also went on to say, um, um, you know, medical uh, insurance coverages and, I mean, you don't have to really address that exactly, but does this fall under the protection and guidance with Massachusetts general laws?
Yes, that's right. Actually, the program is called Adult Day Health Program, so A D H. And that is registered with, you know, the state Department of Public Health. So the other facility that exists one, same thing, you know, all registered with the Department of Public Health of Massachusetts. And also, um, no, I want to tell you something about, you know, why we encourage like, you know, uh, senior attending this kind of facility, not only us. I know, you know, in Southborough, um, I, I don't think there's any existing facility like us, but in the surrounding neighborhood, surrounding towns, there are a few. Um, you know, by attending these, you know, they can, you know, reduce the risk of falls and hospitalization. Sometimes, like, you know, when they are home alone, because, you know, that's not possible, like, you know, the caregiver, like, you know, son or daughter or other caregivers will be them like twenty-four hours or especially during the day, they need to work, like I said before. So if they come to us, the risk will be reduced greatly.
And so, so my, my question, um, I agree, by the way, the fall is, is often of great concern to, you know, children of elderly parents. Um, but you're, um, accountable, so my question's more of an oversight, uh, perspective. Um, so the facility is, is formally registered with this.
The state.
So, uh, under those rules and regulations for the safety, not that it sounds like you're going to provide all the safety and all the guidance necessary to care for these elderly, but that they're safe.
Yeah.
You're reportable. Is that, is that like a monthly reporting or an annual reporting?
Uh, actually, you know, what we do, the nurses, they do like monthly assessment for the senior and give the report, the assessment result to the P C P, their doctor. Make sure there is any changes or there's no changes.
Do, you, you're talking about of the facility itself, like, well, how are they certified? Does somebody come by and, and check on it or?
Right, well, so I have a lack of familiarity, but basically, um, not so much that the nurses need to be nurses, of course. Uh, but the, the facility has oversight, so the assisted livings.
I think, I think the question is more than oversight from the state.
From the state, so, oh, if I can just get started, and then I'll let, I'll let you finish, because he knows more about it than I do, but uh, if we're able to get through the permitting process and the, and the build-out, the state, first of all, there's licensing requirements and we'll, and we'll file the applications for those licenses. And before we would be able to operate, uh, they would actually come out and they would do a complete inspection of the property to ensure that it met their safety requirements. The thing that I don't know, which I think is responsive to what you're asking, is after that first inspection, do they come out periodically, monthly, annually?
That's right, you know.
I don't know that.
Regularly, they come like and visit us every two years to do like, you know, full site inspection. All the paperwork, you know, every notes, everything, they do the tour on the site, make sure everything is okay as a original designed. And also, they do a random check, they may, you know, stop by and say hello, I want to walk through this, yeah, facility, they're welcome, no problem. Actually, uh, last year, you know, we had the, you know, the inspection, you know, we got a hundred percent, you know, uh, successful, like, you know, passed the inspection, and also, um, you know.
Sorry, could I just, uh, so the, the random ones are, are unannounced, correct?
Yeah, that's right, yes.
Okay, so, um, I think I get the, uh, general understanding. My, my concern, David, is, um, that, um, our elderly are, um, kept safe and that complaints are kept to the bare minimum. Okay.
Thank, thank you. Uh, online, we've got, uh, Jamie, do you have any questions?
Um, no questions. From what I've heard so far, I, I really don't have a problem with this. Um, and I agree as someone who is watching her parents get a bit older, but really going through it with my in-laws, I can appreciate what this facility will offer.
Thank you.
No questions.
All right, Mike?
No, everything's been covered.
Okay, um, yeah, my, I don't really have any questions either. I think you've outlined it pretty clearly. As you said, it's an existing building, uh, it's really just about a second use. I think we're all basically in agreement. It doesn't, it certainly doesn't take away from the neighborhood, it's located industrially. Um, you know, my own personal story is my parents did end up going to, uh, adult daycare towards the end of their lives, and it was a tremendous, uh, benefit to, um, my, my siblings. And I actually see it right across the street now. The bus, probably pretty similar to what Mr. Zhang has, shows up and takes the neighbor's parents on a, on a daily basis, so, uh, without question, it's, it's a good service. Are, is there, do we have, I don't know if we have anybody from the, uh, butters or from the public that wants to ask any questions or speak? Either here or online? Anybody raising their hand online?
Um, no.
Okay, so nobody in the audience?
Hang on, yes, I have.
You have one?
Maybe, Jack keeps, I'm gonna bring him over. He keeps raising his hand and putting it down, so.
Okay.
Jack, did you have a question?
Can't hear you, Jack. Is he using your phone, Paul?
Can you hear me? Can it, can anybody, let, hang on.
We got you now.
We can hear you now.
You can hear me now. Okay, uh, I'm in agreement with this a hundred percent. Uh, twenty-five percent of the population in the town of Southborough is over the age of sixty-five, so it's, I think it's a good use. Uh, the only question I have is he mentioned something about signage. And as you know, I have a directional sign for Nance uh, at the corner of my property, which is west of this property. But I, I didn't hear exactly what he said about signage. So that's, that's, I'm just, uh, if he could just tell me where his sign is gonna be, uh, I have no issue with this at all.
Yeah, I think, I, I think I can speak to that, and we may have to pull up the plan, but i- if you know the property, there's an existing, uh, pylon out by Route nine that has signs for other, for other, uh, offices in there. And we're just gonna have an, an additional sign on that pylon. And it's my understanding, there's gonna be no additional signage on the building or anywhere else. Am I correct about that?
So, so, so it's gonna be on an existing structure?
It's just gonna be on an existing, already constructed pylon, uh, with no alteration to the building for any other signs.
That's fine, that's, that's, that doesn't block me at all, so that's great. So I'm a hundred percent in favor.
Thank you. Right, anybody else?
No, I do not have anybody.
Anybody here seems to be stepping forward, so I don't think we have any other questions. Uh, we could entertain closing the public meeting and taking a vote.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right, and Williams, aye. That closes the public meeting. Uh, again, uh, considering the temperature of the hearing, I don't think we have anything really more to discuss. Um, there are, there's, there's, there's two.
There are two special permits.
Two special permits, just to be clear. I think we don't have to take separate votes. I think it's just the motion needs to be to approve.
And I think I'm an alternate tonight, because I think all of us are here, so I don't know.
Oh, you're, oh.
Yep.
That's a good point, thank you.
Just, just for going, just for the vote part.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. I always need a reminder. Uh, but we do need the motion first.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to uh, approve as applied for, for both the um, special permits. Is that, did I say that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a second? All right, Jamie with the second. Okay, motion to approve both special permits as submitted and written, have been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doris? Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Thank you very much. That's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I'll be in touch about timelines and filing and everything like that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, good luck with it. Okay, um, so I, I just sort of an administrative note here, what, the, the way the agenda is written, item two is uh, what we commonly refer to as Park Central, which is zero Turnpike Road. However, we do have two board members who accuse themselves, and we, we have another item of business, the reorganization of the board that we have to take care of. That means we need to uh, choose and, uh, vote on a new chair, a new clerk. That's it. So, need to take, so if, if you're here for Park Central, I, I just would ask for a little bit of patience. I don't think this would take too long. But we, um, think the first item or, or business would be for the chair. I don't have strong feelings.
Just, for, um, if, if these folks are here for Park Central, that, to let them know that there's really nothing on Park Central tonight, to, oh.
Yeah, um, that's true, just to, to sort of give away, I, I agree, I, I hate to make people wait. The long and the short of it is that, that, you know, that, that the applicant's not here, we asked if they could appear on Zoom, they're unavailable. Uh, essentially, what we're gonna do is, is continue it for two weeks and um, not to speak for the entire board, but I think we are gonna be expecting some answers in two weeks. There, there'll definitely be more of a discussion if that's what you're here for. So, again, sorry to, to make you fall out here.
Get out between the reins.
So, thank you for that, Paul.
You're welcome.
It's, I think he said that they're being catered.
It sounded like, yeah.
Yeah, they're being, they're being brought in, so there's, and there was no, I don't see any kitchen on the plans, so it sounded like they were being catered. Yeah, yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, again, back to reorganization of the board. I think we typically take on the, uh, the, the chair person role first. So, I was just starting to say, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. You ready for somebody else?
Vote not to reorganize.
You have to, it's legally required.
Right. I'd like to make a vote to keep the organization the same, how's that?
I, I second, second.
All right, all right.
Well, that sounds unanimous.
No, that, yeah, so can we move on? Now, that, what, what, let's, we need to, we do, we, we should be formal and take on, uh, and nominate someone be the chair to begin with.
So I, I will, I will nominate.
He's gonna go against the direction.
If I will nominate, uh, Dave to stay, Dave Williams to stay as our chairman of our board, of the, of the zoning board here.
Second.
Oh, that was a second.
I don't know if we need to second, but I'm seconding it.
No, it, it does, okay. Uh, all right, motion to, uh, for me to continue as the chair has been made with a second. Uh, all in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay, Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Can I vote?
Yes, you can.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jamie?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, the second position, current, what's that?
Are you gonna vote?
You can abstain if you want.
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll abstain, how's that?
Yeah, you don't want to be on the record.
I don't want my, yeah, I don't want my.
It's terrible enough as it is.
So the, uh, the, the other position is the, the clerk currently occupied by Mr. Robbins.
Does anybody else want it?
I was, I would, uh, I think Mike's been doing a great job as clerk and I would like to nominate Mike to stay as, to Mike Robbins to stay as clerk of the, of the zoning board, please.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to nominate Mike Robbins as the clerk for the upcoming year with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay, Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Mike?
Abstain.
Abstain. Congratulations, we got that piece of business out of the way. Now, as far, that, there's, that, that's it for.
Can we just knock the minutes out really quick since we have a full board?
Yeah, yeah, is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
We're not holding, I don't think we're holding any bit up now.
No.
Um, so we've got two separate meetings, June twelfth and June twenty-sixth. Now the, you, can you, which was, I want to make sure that anybody who wasn't here doesn't feel, uh, for one of the meetings.
I know when I wasn't here.
Okay, which one?
Yeah.
The twenty-sixth I wasn't here.
Okay.
I also was not here on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, yeah, the twelfth, we had a full board.
Okay. Um, they were, they were pretty lengthy, both of them. I think weren't, they both related to, no, no, that this, the, June twenty-sixth was about two fifty, right? June twelfth was about one twenty. Right? And so one twenty was when they said, uh, you know, they came back and said, change where it's going, you're getting your six point two acres, you know, there was a lot of conversation about that. I didn't find any problems with the minutes, but, uh, I.
It's good with both, I read both of them, fine with both meeting minutes.
Okay.
The twelfth and the next one.
All right, anyone, any, anyone else with any comments? Mike, how'd they look to you?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Okay.
For June twelfth?
For, for, for June twelfth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, with this.
I'll second that.
I'll second, oh, well, you, you were, you said you were, you were at the June twelfth, Doris, right?
I was at the June twelfth, I, I was not, I might, by the way, June twenty-sixth is my birthday.
Oh, okay, all right, that's why.
It was not here.
No.
Okay, motion to approve the meeting minutes for June twelfth as written has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay, Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Williams, aye, uh, Jamie?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
Okay, very good, that takes care of the June twelfth minutes. Uh, June twenty-sixth, I think I have that right, was the two fifty turnpike hearing. Uh, we didn't really go too far with that. Uh, what, that was where we, we discussed where the initial plan was, sort of the bigger sort of classic building and the option B or whatever they call it.
Yeah.
More accepted by the butters, basically, is a bunch of townhouses. So that was, that was the basic nature of that discussion. Again, there's a lot there, I didn't find anything that I would change in the minutes.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, Mike and Jamie?
I'm fine with it.
I was not at that, I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay, right. Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June twenty-sixth.
As written, okay.
I'll second.
With a second, okay. A motion to accept the meeting minutes from June twenty-sixth as written has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay, Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Doris, not here, so abstaining, Williams, aye. Jamie, you were not here, did you say?
I'm not there.
Correct.
Mike?
I was here, so I can vote, aye.
Okay, there you go. With two abstaining, right?
Yep.
Okay, very, very good, okay. So, back to Zero Turnpike Road, uh.
Jamie and Paul can be free.
Park Century, yeah, yeah, um, unless you want to. What, yeah, the, the.
I'm on vacation, I'm on vacation.
Don't, don't, don't drag it out, Jamie.
Do we have anything to say about the upcoming meetings or is that?
We, we do have one on July thirty-first.
July thirty-first, which will be one.
Another, I remembered that.
Yeah, one twenty turnpike and Park Central. And then our next meeting after that is August twenty-first for two, excuse me, two fifty turnpike. And that's it for now.
That sounds great.
Sounds like a change.
All right, so now, yeah, Jamie, Paul, you are free, you don't have to.
Thank you.
Recused.
Enjoy vacation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I might need Laura to correct me what I'm gonna say here, but. E- essentially for Park Central, our, our, you know, this was, obviously, this is a continued hearing. Uh, the, I think the long and the short of it is the litigation is still a ways from being resolved. They requested an extension and then they said, well, you know, we're not really gonna be able to be here. So, I mean, I had a little conversation with, uh, or email, I, I had a conversation with Laura and I, I did, uh, involve Jay Tellman a bit to say, well, you know, what, what are our options? But given the fact that nobody could be here this evening, I think really this is a formality. I think what we really want to do here is say, yes, we want to extend it, or, or continue it by two weeks. And again, plan to have, I would, what I would expect to be a little bit more substantive, uh, discussion at that meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, just as a, if I can interject, I'm gonna be overseas with a seven hour time difference, so it's gonna be a real challenge for me.
Okay.
Uh, it's frustrating to me because, uh, you know, you know, I've been, the record's pretty clear on me, I don't think we should have heard this in the first place. I'm really tired of kicking the can on this in the second place. And I don't think, just, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm not some oracle, but the idea that they were gonna have substantive answers from the court within that timetable, I thought was, you know, overly optimistic on, on a pretty large scale. So, you know, it's one of those things, I would like to say I can attend that meeting, I, I just don't know if that's practical given the, look, the time difference.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think I, I understand pretty clearly your feelings about it. And I think it will be, I think it will be interesting to get Jay's, I, I do have some of Jay's inputs. Mike, you probably already have your own opinions. Um, but I, I, I'm not, you're not wrong, i- it, it is a little bit ridiculous, but, uh, again, I don't, I don't, I want to be careful about not going too far down the road in the, in the discussion here.
I agree, I, I, I know what you're saying, but I just, for the record, so everyone knows where I stand on that, like, I just.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, you know, and I, I, I think, I want to say, I think Doug's pretty, pretty close second there, so there's not really a lot of secrets.
I haven't alerted one today.
So, um, yeah, uh, I, I guess that's really, what I'm asking for is, you know, uh, to take a vote on, um, continuing the hearing until, uh, July thirty-first, that.
Uh, I have a, I have a thought.
But, go ahead.
Small thought, I think, let, let me see if I hear this right, I think missing a hearing, not writing on a hearing is not great. I don't know, if it, yeah, that, I'm just saying how it is. If I miss, I miss a, miss a deadline, I'm a little bit tight on it.
Well, and, and, I mean, you're not wrong because.
I know I'm not wrong.
We, we gave them the opportunity to say, you can dial in remotely, you know, and it's perfectly acceptable, and they didn't do that, so that.
No, I'm just saying.
Point, yeah.
No, no, it's, it's not only am I correct, it's, I'm just thinking about it that, you know, I'm thinking about it because you should show up or write or something.
Yeah, I would hope we have a bit more of a substantive update, which, although I agree with Mike, I'm not sure we're gonna have much of a substantive update in two weeks, but. And, you know, but, yeah, it feels like we're just, you know, kicking the can down the road, but.
Okay, we're cutting a break.
And, and I, I think that's the discussion that we need to have, uh, in, on, on the thirty-first, that's, that's my, my feeling on it. Okay, anything else or?
Do I have, do I have to continue it?
We, I mean, we can, you know, we've got options to say we, 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 we don't want to, uh, you could just, you could say we're, you know, be, be, based on the way it's going, we, we could take a vote to disapprove it, but, um, that's would be, I think the likely outcome there is they go to the, the mass housing and, and deal and it's not gonna be good for us, so as much as I don't really love this either, I, I, I just, without them here, I think this is the, this is the, the only really option.
I think, I think the best for tonight is to continue it to two weeks, right? Just because otherwise, just, you know, at that time's against us, this helps us just to have more time in the bank, but, I mean, again, it should be, hopefully Jay can be here for that next meeting too as well, um, because, again, the, the suggestion he had before is that we could deny, based upon the fact that there's litigation going on and he felt pretty comfortable that mass housing would not suddenly approve the project, right? They would go back and clarify that you, I don't want to call it site control, but there's obviously an impediment here that suggests that you can't do it. I would hope they would resolve the litigation, you know, so we don't have to do that, because I'm not saying there's no risk in that, but it would seem like there's very little risk in that, right?
Yeah.
But I think that's the, the discussion we should have in two weeks, you know, as part of it, um, you know, but at least also to let, you know, the owners know, like, I mean, it, it could be another six, nine, who knows how long it's gonna be, right? And so.
Yeah, and that's back to me, just to interject on Doris's point, you're supposed to be here tonight. Oh, now I'm supposed to be on vacation and like, we're just supposed to jump to another two week extension because they couldn't bother to be, be here tonight, so it's like.
Mike, Mike, I empathize with your seven hours, I've done quite a few.
Yeah, I know, I know.
At three o'clock in the morning and I've done.
Yeah, that's exactly, and you're a better person than I am, I'll tell you that much.
So, I.
It's tough, I.
But I, I actually will, will add, I, I didn't, originally, I didn't include a, a detail, which was, they actually asked to, to push out by three months. And I said, I recommended to Laura, I said, no, 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 they need to be back here before then, we're not, we're not kicking it out three months.
Yep.
I'm glad you did.
Especially without, uh, without them being here.
Yep, could, no, I think in, be great to get a real update and then we can discuss with Jay, not that we necessarily need to take a specific action even on the thirty-first, but I do think it, I think they need to hear from us that this is, we're like wasting time a little bit here.
Correct, right.
Hey, we're wasting all the other residents' time as well, who are showing up all the time for your, your meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I can, I can pretty much guarantee you there will be a butters at that meeting that will say, why are you continuing to continue?
Yeah, I thought we were here that tonight.
That will happen.
Exactly.
Certain of it.
Um, I have a little different angle to make sure I get this extension wrapped around my head. So what is the maximum date since they applied with all this delay in between kicking the can? Did, did I read December eleventh, but if we go out three months, does that add three months? Just someone give me that rundown.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think for us to say we want to extend it out, the ask is we want to push out the date.
Yeah, I think, and they, and they have done that every time, it would have to be day for day, because otherwise it would not, I would not be amenable to.
Right, then the answer would simply be no.
The backend, it's always gotta push out for us, otherwise it, it's not gonna happen.
You can't, can't get it done.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but that keeps the space holder and all those.
Correct, yeah.
Is that fair? I'm a fair person, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, you know, I mean, they, they could be, you know, difficult about it, but if they're the ones requesting the extension, then you would expect them to say, yes, we're gonna push the date out.
I would say, if, if they said they weren't gonna push the date out, well, then I think we're, with Jay's option pretty quickly, which is.
Correct, right.
To deny back to mass housing with the charge that they may not, whatever Jay comes up, but they don't have legitimate site control, whatever it is because of the lawsuit.
Right.
Um, but I would assume they're going to extend the date, but that's an absolute requirement.
Yeah.
If they, if they were to suggest not to extend it day for day, then we have.
I'm just getting my hand, handle on, you know, the best management of the day.
Yeah.
And with, what's best for the town.
Yeah.
And do they own the site?
Yeah, so it would be great for, obviously, I mean, you've already talked to Jay, which is great, so it'd be great that when Jay does come, that, you know, he's prepared to help counsel us at that meeting, you know.
And, and I, I will request that he be here for that meeting, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I do have a tiny detail, if you guys want it, um, in that I, when their attorney called me to figure out the written request for extension that they submitted for this meeting, um, he did note that the deadline for discovery for court has been pushed out to October eighteenth. So, just to give you guys an idea of timeline that they're working with.
Um.
Sorry.
No, it's fine, I, so I, I guess would ask, you know, I'm thinking about Mike here too as well, so, um.
Well, did this mean to you, we sent all the public home?
True.
Okay, so, just in fairness to the public, go ahead.
Yeah, but yeah, so I think, well, so I think at this point, we, we should meet in two weeks, that's what they asked for, right? If they ask for a three month extension, for some reason, I mean, at some point, well, I think too, Mike has to be on, right? Otherwise, we don't have a quorum.
That's my concern.
Yeah, I'd have to run it by Jay. Um, it would be better if we have four.
Yep.
I think technically.
We could still do it.
You can do it with three.
Yeah, that's right, it's three out of.
You could do a continuance.
Yeah.
With three, um, but if you guys were to decide to take some sort of other action, I think it would be best if four were here.
Yep, right, yeah, I think, I was just saying, I'm just trying to, for some reason, Mike cannot find that awesome wifi connection, um.
Seriously. Coffee.
Yeah, a cup of coffee, I would be very much in favor of almost, first of all, they asked for something long, I almost be like, we're gonna just punt to the next regular meeting that, you know, Mike can be at, you know, type of thing.
Sure.
You know, because I'm just saying, like, if for some reason Mike cannot be on the call, I would almost be like, yeah, let's take the update, but, you know, we're not, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a longer extension without all of us here.
Right, that's fine.
Yeah, so, or even taking a more drastic action, and for some reason, Mike, you could not find the wifi connection.
It's, it's literally, it's just more time and I've got a two-year-old and a ten-year-old and, you know, I'm literally, I get so little vacation time, it's just like, you know.
Fair enough.
Mike, to share with you, that is the worst time at night, by the way, to take those calls, it's.
That's what I mean.
My two-year-old.
And that's where it's just adding frustration, it's just, oh, so now I have to get up at the crack of dawn because they couldn't get their act together?
It's not the crack of dawn, it's all of dawn.
Yeah, it's, it's middle of the night, whatever, but like.
Middle of the night.
You know, I still have to get up at, you know, five thirty in the morning with the little guy.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
We understand you're a volunteer.
No, uh, uh, again, like, if it wa, it's of cour, if, if I could punt on anything else, I'd punt, but, you know, this is a big deal and it's just like, okay, well, you know, of cour, of course, this has to.
Can we look at recruiting, um, an alternate, it's too late, we're past the, we're past that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I missed too many meetings. That, that idea is dead, sorry.
I mean, we still need another alternate.
Yeah, I remember we're back when we were recruiting Doug.
Yeah.
That we, we probably are still, and you had put something up on the town website. I remember that, Laura.
Yeah.
Somebody who'd be interested.
All right, so, just to take care of the, of the business of the, the hearing for, um, Park Central. Do we have a motion to approve the request to continue it by two weeks?
I can make a motion to approve the request to extend it two weeks. And then also extend the, the deadline date as well, which they've accepted as well by two weeks.
Yeah, they did put that in their written request for continuation.
Okay.
Okay, um, just cause we need to be time-specific, so July thirty-first, um.
What do we have? Make a motion to extend to July thirty-first?
To continue to July thirty-first. Um, we have one twenty turnpike scheduled for that. We were supposed to have some more of a substantial discussion. Um, however, I had still not received updated plans, and they still need to go to peer review. So I'm not, it's unclear how deep we can dive into that on the thirty-first, but what I can do is I can put Park Central for seven fifteen, and then that way, if one twenty wraps up quickly, we can take them. They don't, we don't have to sit around waiting till seven thirty or so. Um, but we can always take them later if we need to.
Okay, okay, that's good.